Good evening, Board members. Do I have a motion to reconvene in open session?
I make a motion to reconvene.
Sarah Second?
Second.
The board is now in open session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution certifying the closed session?
Now there forebe it resolved that school board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the first student matter?
In case number 2024-25/1, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next student matter?
In case number 2024-25/2, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the remaining student matters?
In case numbers 2024-25/5RE, 2024-25/6RE, 2024-25/7RE, 2024-25/8RE, 2024-25/9RE, 2024-25/10RE, 2024-25/11RE, 2024-25/12RE, and 2024-25/13RE, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendations be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the first personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/03-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/04-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/05-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/06-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/07-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/08-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to call the September 10, 2024 School Board Business Meeting to order. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to thank everyone for attending and reminding the audience that comments to this board may only be made at the podium during the public comment period. Comments from the audience are prohibited and are in violation of Section 18.2-415 of the Code of Virginia, Disorderly Conduct in Public Places, and School Board Policy 6141. I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding so that we can conduct the business meeting in an orderly fashion. We will now have an invocation by Mr. Pronto, followed by the flag salute led by Mrs. Coker.
Before tonight's invocation, I would like to recognize with a moment of silence the passing of Tammy Lewis, a TWA nurse for Head Start who joined CCPS on July 1, 2008, and also in reverence to tomorrow being September 11, in recognition to all those victims who had succumbed to the terror attacks that occurred on September 11, 2001. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to serve on this board. We thank you for those in attendance today. We thank you for the near 65,000 students that you have entrusted to Chesfield County Public Schools. Father, as we continue in tonight's session and in the months and years to come, would you remind us that it is your children that we are putting first in our policies and decisions that we make? We pray that you would guide our decisions, that you would guide our conversations, and that you would guide our votes. We ask all of this humbly in your name that we pray. Amen.
Please join us at this time in the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening's consent agenda includes agenda adoption, approval of the minutes, August 13, 2024 work session, August 13, 2024 business meeting, August 29, 2024 special meeting, memo number 115-24 recommended personnel actions, memo number 116-24 acceptance of new grants, memo number 117-24 deed of gift for courtyard improvement project at Elizabeth Scott Elementary School, memo number 118-24 fund transfer for AM Davis Elementary School, memo number 119-24 deed of gift donated books from Second &amp; Charles, a used book retailer, and memo number 120-24 appointment of members to school board advisory committees. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any requests from a school board member to separate an item from the consent agenda for discussion and individual action? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Todd Heffron.
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. Smith, would you please announce our new administrators?
If I could ask Summer Manos to come forward at this time? Board members, due to action this evening, you've approved as Director of Special Education, Summer Manos, effective October 1, 2024. Summer received certificate in administration supervision from UVA in June of 2019, Masters of Education Special Education from VCU in December of 2002, I'm sorry, 2003, and Bachelor of Science in Human Development from Virginia Tech, May 2000. Most recently, she served Assistant Principal at Westgate Elementary School and Fairfax County Public Schools. Previously, she served as Educational Specialist, Pyramid procedural support and response intervention specialist in Fairfax County Public Schools, and coming back home from Chesterfield, she previously served as Special Education Liaison and Learning Disabilities Teacher for our school division. Please join me congratulating Summer Manos.
Next, we have awards and recognitions. Mr. Smith?
If I could ask representatives from Tomahawk Creek Middle School to come forward at this time? Tomahawk Creek Middle is the first school in Chesfield County Public Schools to recognize a school of distinction. The Association for Middle Level Education recognized a total of 17 schools for 2024, including Tomahawk Creek Middle and five other Virginia schools. The School of Distinction program recognized exemplary schools while supporting them through a process of strategic vision setting to help foster ongoing growth and success. Schools of distinction completed rigorous review that measures implementation of best practices and continuous improvement plans. Principal Rebecca Thompson and Associate Principal Charle Breeden will accept the School of Distinction Award in the Association's Conference Nashville, Tennessee. Please join me congratulating Tomahawk Creek Middle School.
Congratulations. We all know that there are amazing things that are happening at Tomahawk Creek. I'd like, if you don't mind, to tell us a little bit more about the process involved in becoming a school of distinction and how we're supporting our students, what that's, what that looks like in action.
So, it's a very easy process because the things at Tomahawk Creek, the things that our, our teachers are doing every single day, it's just magnificent. So, going through the process and highlighting those things was very simple. We had different committees of stakeholders, teachers, community members, parents, members from central office. So, to you, we want to say thank you, and we would not be able to do this without you.
Yeah.
It was really easy for us to recognize our amazing staff and teachers. We have some back there. Woo-hoo. Yay. And our students, our students were part of the committee and the whole process too. So, we're really, really proud of Tomahawk Creek, and we get to network with some amazing schools across the entire country. So, we're really excited.
Yeah, thank you. The first in Virginia. Congratulations. First in Chesterfield, six in Virginia altogether, but bringing it home to Chesterfield. We appreciate you. Thank you for your hard work and all you do. Let's hear it again.
If I could ask Bird High's robotics team to come forward at this time? Bird High's first robotics team earned a spot in the world championship competition. Among thousands of students on 600 teams gathered April 17 in Houston were the Bird High students and coaches who made up the robotics teams. This is the first time since 2019 that RoboHawks were part of the world championship competition. Aaron Haymans is a head coach. Helmut Beach is the faculty sponsor. RoboHawks mentors are Paul Elkovich, Mark Clifton, Jim Slangine, Stingline, Michael Yanishek, Dak Griffith, and Grayson Hesch. Students on RoboHawks team are Judah Brandis, Carter Hyatt-Goll, Lucy Casey, Sophia Taylor, Valerie Wu, Kessler Heblum, Graham Maddox, Ethan Mathias, Garrett Handris, Hudson Kraft, Frank Torzano, Steve, Stevie Buffenmar, Bremen, I'm sorry, Brian Lopez, Aaron Shaw, Adam Heaton, Grant Williams, Sam Brooks, and Joshua Demline. Please join me congratulating the Bird High first robotics team.
So, I got to see your robot in action. Too bad you couldn't bring it here. It was really cool. You guys would appreciate it. My robotics experience extends to Johnny Five. If you know who that is, then we're, Elsie, you know. Thank you. That's, that's what I grew up watching, right? But your robot was super cool. So, I appreciate the hands-on demonstration. If you want to share, tell us the best thing about building your robot.
I think the best thing about building my robot is the community we're able to build. I got, I made so many friends along the way, and I learned so much about it. Like, I went into the program not knowing anything, and robotics taught me as much as school did.
I think the best part about it was like learning like industry skills, like things that we were going to carry on like into our career, not just things that we learned in school as well.
I, I really think that a big part of robotics is learning about how to lead a team and making friends along the way was a big important part for me.
A big part for me and many others is the boost in character. I gained a lot of confidence and a lot of just credibility and understanding of my own character, and it boosted my teamwork as well.
I just want to thank the rest of the mentors and the, the staff of Elsie Bird that support us. Without them, this program would not be as successful as it is. Ultimately, this is the student's success, but we are very proud to be a part of it. So.
If I could ask the Bird High Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team to come forward at this time? The Bird High School Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team won the VHSL Class V State Championship. In 2023, the Bird High School Girls Team was a runner for the VHSL competition. Coaches are Adam Canning, Anthony Calicat, Darlington Toia. Members of the Bird High Girls Track Team are Cameron Hills, Alana Ellis, Lauren Taylor, Brianna Comer, Nia Armstrong, Kaitlyn Cook, Aleah Elliott, Natural Faison, and Ann Maria Wilson. Please join me congratulating the Bird High Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team.
So, I guess it's safe to say that winning is something that we just do here in track and field at Bird. History of continuous champions. I got the privilege of watching two of them run at middle school, and it's no surprise you're standing here again, doing great things in high school. So, we're going to go that way and with the coaches. But tell us the best part about track and field and your event.
I ran the 400 and I triple jump. I think the best part of winning a state championship at Bird is having a sense of being on a team, like just bringing us together and being the first in a really long time to win just makes us want it that much more following years. It's just bringing it home to Bird.
I ran the 300 meter hurdles, and I think the best part about the track team was the people I met along the way and like all the teammates and encouragement and how like the welcoming community of the track team.
I run the 300 hurdles and the four by four, and the best part about running track would be the coaches and the teammates that I met along the way over the years.
I run the 100, the four by one and the four by four, and long and triple jump. And the best thing about being on Bird's track team was the sense of community and the amount of friends and support that I've gained along the way.
The best thing about coaching at Elsie Bird Track and Field Championships is the dedication from the kids, teamwork by the coach.
I'll go last. The best part about coaching at Elsie Bird is definitely the athletes that we get to work with, the student athletes that we get to work with, the administration we have supporting us, the students, parents. We have the best coaching staff in the state of Virginia working with us, and hopefully we'll be back in whenever indoor track states comes around and you guys recognize us again. So, here's to another one. Modesty. If I could ask the Cosby High Boys Soccer Team to come forward at this time? The Cosby High Boys Soccer Team finished its undefeated 2024 season by winning the VHSL Class VI State Championship. This is Cosby's second state championship. The first came in 2018. Head Coach Mike Anderson was named VHSL Coach of the Year. Cosby High Assistant Coaches are Mike Verbeek, Vincent Kralowski, Brian Anderson, Gabe Rains. Team Managers are Tripp Riddle and Connor Winter. Soccer Team members are Ryan Lowndry, who was named VHSL Player of the Year, Dennis Hayes, who was named to the VHSL First Team All-State, Nikita Hayes, who was named to VHSL First Team All-State, Owen Herring, Henry Hauser, Isaac Torres, Nate Hellman, Jeeed Kushman, Evan Gaines, Derek Rutledge, Kyle Fowler, Ben Posey, Jesus Hernandez, Javi Cotrell, Brayden Elsery, Zach Se, Austin Peterson, Aggie, Aggie, I'm sorry, I got this wrong. Aggie Cal Shadoras, Landon Kozlowski, Jackson Moore, Caleb Stanley, Jordan Bonnet, Braden Pascal, Zach Stoss, Declan Burke, Evan Ogletree, Cameron Herring, Charlie Sanders, and Camden Britt. Please join me congratulating the Cosby High Boys Soccer Team.
I have to say, I think you made it in life when you get the police escort up to. Fantastic. So, we had a, a donut party for the boys, and I was, I was honored to attend. But I came dressed in shorts and a shirt. I thought we were going to like go out in the field on the pitch and kick the ball around or whatnot, but they just wanted to sit down and eat donuts and, and hang out with each other, which was great. But just hats off to each of you. Fantastic to represent Cosby High School, state champs, undefeated. Your record will go in the books, right? For years to come, those coming up behind you will go, oh, remember that team? I want to be like them. You may not realize it now, but those that are watching you that are coming up, right? They want to be like you. They want to be on the field, and they want to bring home another state championship for Cosby. So, congratulations, and I really want to give opportunity for each of you to let us know what position you play and what is it about this team that got you across the state championship finish line?
Brian Anderson, Assistant Coach. What was the difference? The kids showed up every day wanting to compete and keeping their eyes on the prize the entire time?
Emory Cameron. I played striker. It really was a new atmosphere for me. Sophomore, was freshman last year. So, I really liked being in this new atmosphere and just playing with more competitive play style and all that. So, yeah.
Evan Ogletree. I play center back. I guess it was just how determined the players were and the coaches were to win the state championship that got us there.
I'm Zach Se, and I play center back. And the best thing about this team was how hard everybody trained and practiced every day and how much fun of a group it was to play with every day.
I'm Henry Hauser. I'm a goalkeeper, and my favorite part about this team was how they were like a family to me. And yeah.
My name's Camden Britt. I play center back. And honestly, the best part was just going out every day on like the field and just like competing with my teammates.
My name's Owen Herring, and I'm a goalkeeper. And I think the best thing was everyone just wanted to get better every day.
I'm Cameron Herring, and I play right back. And I think the best thing was just how well we connected with each other. I mean, we started conditioning in February, so it shows us how long we can connect with each other.
Caleb Stanley. I play forward. And my favorite part is just how every single day in practice, our team came together. We wanted to push. We knew what we wanted, and we got what we wanted.
I'm Charlie Sanders. I play center back, and I think it was just the determination from everybody at practice. It just transferred over to the games. Everybody wanted to win all the time.
I'm Nate Hellman. I play right back, and I think the brotherhood and just the bonds that we made were just the most, most important to help us push further.
I'm Landon Kozlowski, center mid. The best thing was how competitive we were at practice, and we were always determined to win.
Mike Anderson, one of the coaches. My son Brian and Mark, my man right here. Listen, you can hear what they were saying. It was just so much fun to work with. We kept a big team, and it was super competitive at practice, and I watched the top player who's all this and all that, and the Gatorade Player of the Year work with the bottom player. And there was never a, I'm number 29 and I'm number one. It was everybody together. So, thank you, and I enjoyed that immensely. That's my favorite part by far. Winning is great, but that was, that was just something. Mark?
Yeah, Mark Verbeek, Assistant Coach. For me, it's, I was part of the, the program as a player, just like, like Brian, and now to be part of it as an assistant coach and just seeing the culture that Mike has created within the program and the boys coming out every day wanting to get better, wanting to compete. That's for me the, the best part, I think. Yeah, of the program and, and of the season.
If I could ask our representatives for the Manchester High Film Festival to come forward at this time? Manchester High dominated the 2024 Virginia High School League Film Festival. High schools throughout Virginia submitted films, and only 48 films were chosen for the film festival, and nine of those were created by Manchester High students taught by Christopher Okamura and Leanne Orster. Manchester High won these awards. Have a Blast with Pressure Works won first place in the commercial category, and also won the Audience Choice Award in that category. More Than Just You won first place in the Public Service Announcement category, and Last Time for Everything won the Audience Choice Award in the Narrative category. Congratulations to these Manchester High students for their film success. Ben Armstrong, Danika Patrella, DM Nguyen, Gideon Bradner, Kennedy McCarter, Livia Barnes, Susannah Angus, Willow Buck, Sean Mullins, Madison Stamps, Lauren Martin, Lacy Powell, and Karis Kite. Please join me congratulating these students.
Now, there's a lot more to this team, right? There's a lot more to this team. If you haven't seen the videos, I highly recommend that you check them out. The most impactful when I was watching them was the PSA for opioid, I believe it was. And it was, it was a, a young lady that came through a door, and her dog greeted her, and the dog was real excited, and she interacted. And then the next scene, she comes through the door, and she kind of looks at the dog, but then moves about. And then the third scene, she completely ignores the dog, and the dog's just standing there like, what happened to you? It was very impactful to, sometimes we don't see in ourselves, right, what we're doing and how it impacts other people. But y'all captured that, and I'm not surprised at all why you're first place in numerous categories and why you're up here. So, congratulations. Please introduce yourselves, and the question that I have for you in regards to filmmaking or film production is what is it about that that you are able to, you know, get the message out? What, what about that just inspires you to continue in, in the film industry?
I'm Sean Mullins. Film has been awesome because I get to truly express myself and show gratitude to my teammates and really make relations and memorable experiences that I'll never forget and carry on for the rest of my life.
Hi, I'm Lauren Martin and I worked on an animation called Sprinkling Friends with Madison and Andrew here. And while it's not necessarily considered traditional filmmaking, working on an animated film really provided me with some insight on what it's like to work in a team and in a professional environment, but also in a friendly environment. And getting to work on that was such an amazing experience and I really enjoyed bringing an idea to life in that way.
My name is Madison Janey Stamps and I worked on Sprinkle and Friends as well. I was the background artist and I kid you not, I was not a background artist before this. I did not. That wasn't my thing. But Andrew, he recruited me because he saw one of my pieces. It was like this childhood bunny rabbit type artwork. It was like the laziest thing I've ever done. He was still like, join the team. And I was like, oh, okay. But it was a wonderful experience working with Andrew.
Yeah, we had to like harass you to get you to join. Yeah, gently coach because we're friends.
Just friendly suggestions for you to join. Don't worry about it.
Hi, my name is Andrew Messick. I am one of the directors for the films in the animation category, Sprinkle and Friends. This was my first time in a more competitive professional sense to put my art out there in an animation sense. It was incredibly difficult, but so much fun to try and do that and it's something I want to do in the future as a career. And to do that and to make it all the way to final selection was an incredible experience and it only just made me feel more passionate about the arts and wanting to do that further in my life.
Hey, I'm Ben Armstrong. I worked on several films last year and I think the best part about it all was just being able to be, express my creative side and be able to indulge in that with the people in my group, my friends, my teachers, and then having the specialty center as a way to sharpen those skills and to really tell the stories I want to tell. Because we all love telling stories and filmmaking is a beautiful way to capture that. So being able to express those, whether it be in regular storytelling or a commercial or PSA or documentary is just something truly special and something that I want to pursue in the future and it's just wonderful.
I'm Gideon Bradner. The best part about filmmaking is making the films, honestly. So I don't know how to describe it other than that. It's just, it's such a unique experience, being able to work with some of your closest friends and in the moment, see them as your worst enemies because they don't see what you're trying to do, but in the end, you come to like a compromise and you really get to work together to create something genuinely beautiful that you get to put out to the world and you get to show, I made this. This is my expression. It's, it's a feeling unlike anything else. It honestly is.
Hi, I'm Chris Okamura. I teach film and mass communications at Manchester. I just want to say, first of all, that serving this community as a teacher is, has been the greatest privilege of my life and working with students like this is the greatest privilege of my life. We would not be able to enjoy this degree of success if it were not for, one, our principal who believes in us and supports us, Ms. Christy Ellis, and also having the time and resources and space and freedom that the specialty center gives us. And so I also want to thank our coordinator, Ms. Tracy O'Brien. I really believe in the power of filmmaking in the hands of teenagers. There are a lot of things that young people do not get to decide for themselves and it's very easy for them to feel powerless, but you put a camera in their hands and you let them write a script and bring their vision to life and you can see into their world. Sometimes it's a little scary, but, but it can also be very beautiful and thought provoking. And I just want to say, I am very grateful to have that opportunity every day. So thank you very much.
If I could ask our representatives from Manchester High School for the National Guard Cup to come forward at this time? Come on up. Some familiar faces here. For outstanding success in VHSL academic activities, Manchester High won its first ever National Guard Cup presented by the Virginia Army National Guard. The cup is awarded annually for demonstrating year-long success in Virginia High School League Academic Activities. For the Academic Cup, competition points are tallied from publications, multimedia, robotics, theaters, classic bowl, forensics, debate, creative writing, and film festival. Manchester High earned 398 points, more than any National Guard Cup winner has ever achieved since the war began in 1990, to win the cup for the VHSL Classics in 23-24. Here are Manchester High's successes that led the National Guard Cup. Three points for forensics. Chris Okamura is a faculty advisor for students Sean Mullins, Zachariah Woosley, Bradley Long, Jean Cogcel, Gage Gwilt, and Lauren Myers. Thirty-five points for the Trophy Class Award, won by the Literary Magazine. Rebecca Lynch is the faculty advisor and Lacy Powell is the editor. Thirty-five points for the Trophy Class Award, won by the Yearbook. Peter Willis is the faculty advisor and Karis Kite is the editor. And 325 points for Film Festival Awards. Christopher Okamura is the video production teacher. Leanne Worster is the animation teacher. Please join me congratulating Manchester High School.
Okay, we get it. You guys are really good. You're really good. No, seriously, congratulations. I think that's a lot to say. 398 points, the most ever awarded to a school since its inception of 1990. If you look at the other classes that were there and broken down, we're Class Six. Manchester is Class Six. Classes one through five, their top winning schools were in the 100 range. So had they been competing against Manchester, you guys would have won all six classes if you look at the points breakdown. And so that just absolutely blows my mind. Again, congratulations to everything that you have accomplished. Way to represent Lancers at Manchester. I said this to you when I met with you guys, you know, the sports teams, and rightfully so, they get the attention, right? State championships and, you know, they won in overtime and it was a nail biter and all this kind of stuff. And all that's great and warranted, but we do so much more in Chesterfield County than just sports. And what you're doing out there and winning these awards and bringing them home and representing not only your high school, but our county, just says so much about the great things that we have going on here in Chesterfield County. But we could not get there without great leaders in the classroom and phenomenal students who are willing to put themselves out there. So could we please give these fine folks another round of applause?
I was up here in error the first time. My name's Rebecca Lynch and I'm the literary magazine sponsor. It is amazing to take a creative writing class full of very creative and artsy and dreamy kids and show them that they can create a magazine completely out of student writing and student art and that it looks amazing and I'm really proud of their trophy class. They did a great job.
I'm Sean Mullins again. I do forensics and public speaking's been amazing, getting to meet these awesome people and making these experiences that I never thought I'd be able to do coming into Manchester High School and truly expressing myself in a way that I really love. And I have to thank Christopher Okamura especially for guiding me that way and letting me go to states and, you know, showing up and having a great time. But speech has truly been an amazing thing for me and almost life-changing.
I was part of working on the film team and we made several states, well, we made several films, made it to VHSL Film Festival. And yeah, I said VHSL Film Fest. Anyways, it was an amazing experience. I won't waste your time anymore.
I've already wasted enough time.
I'll give you guys the exact same speech again. No, just thank you very much for this recognition and opportunity. Thank you.
If I could ask Diane Faye Gappas to come forward at this time? For our recognition of staff's success this evening, Planning Administrator Diane Faye Gappas, who joined Chesterfield County Public Schools in 2018, recently completed a Leadership Development Program sponsored by the Virginia Chapter of the American Planning Association. Program participants engage in intensive conversations during monthly meetings and completing assignments like shadowing leaders they admire. Diane made such an impression during the Leadership Development Program that she was asked to help the National American Planning Association Foundation evaluate scholarship applications. The president of Virginia Chapter of the American Planning Association said that her commitment is admirable and reflects her desire to provide excellent service in her job. Please join me congratulating Diane.
So this is a big deal. You are, I was so impressed. I did a little bit of research on it. So you're planning administrator for the, for us, CCPS, yay. As part of your job title is, well, not your title, but the things that you do is you facilitate redistricting process. Whoopsie. No, don't know who that is. You do a lot of things that we really need. It's great. So, and then I have a little quote right from you, so please tell me if I'm correct. And then you don't have anything to say because I've taken your quote, but she embodies our continuous learner mindset and your joy of constantly learning and being excellent at what you do just shined forth. And so she says, "As I continuously strive to improve and grow, I hope to learn new techniques, strategies, and approaches on how I can effectively lead and understand the core essence and value of being a leader." You're constantly learning and growing and getting better and for that, we are grateful to have you here. We are so proud. Is there anything you want to say about? No, okay, okay. We're so impressed. Go out there and keep being great. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
For our next recognition, I'd like to invite the family of Reverend Dr. Wilson Shannon to join Mrs. Coker in front of the dais. I'd also like to invite Mr. Jim Holland, Chairman of the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors and Deacon at First Baptist Church Centralia, to join us on the dais.
Madam Clerk?
We're going to read the resolution. Would you please read the resolution recognizing Reverend Dr. Wilson Shannon?
In memory of the Reverend Dr. Wilson Shannon, whereas the Reverend Dr. Wilson Shannon served as pastor of First Baptist Church Centralia from March 1991 until his death in August 2024 and believed in the transformative power of education. And whereas Dr. Shannon was for decades, a dedicated member of the Faith Leaders Group that meets quarterly with the Chesterfield County School Board and the Superintendent of Chesterfield County Public Schools in order to keep religious communities up to date on opportunities, news, and needs within Chesterfield Schools. And whereas in 2009, Dr. Shannon helped create Mega Mentors, a nonprofit mentoring organization that over the years has connected hundreds of volunteers to make a difference for thousands of students in Chesterfield County Public Schools. And whereas another way that Dr. Shannon was consistently present for young people was by attending multiple high school graduations each spring to share the joy of graduating seniors who looked forward to seeing Dr. Shannon in the stands. And whereas through Dr. Shannon's leadership, First Baptist Church Centralia has embraced students, teachers, and schools in Chesterfield County Public Schools in multiple ways, as well as sending help to communities across the globe where young people have fewer educational opportunities than the children of Chesterfield County. And whereas Dr. Shannon and First Baptist Church Centralia have supported education within Chesterfield County by providing book bags and other needed items for Bellwood Elementary School, Salem Church Middle School, and communities and schools of Chesterfield County. And whereas Dr. Shannon's presence and influence are already missed within the Faith Leaders Group and throughout Chesterfield County Public Schools, but his legacy of educational support continues through First Baptist Church Centralia and his work is evident in the lives of students, teachers, staff members, and families of Chesterfield County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chesterfield County School Board warmly remembers the Reverend Dr. Wilson Shannon and extends heartfelt sympathies to his family and congregation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Board members, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion?
So I'd just like to take this opportunity on behalf of the Chesterfield County School Board and CCPS staff to give our condolences. Dr. Shannon was an amazing man and he was evident out in his community. He was there for all of the students of Chesterfield County. I want to share a little story. My first interaction with Dr. Shannon was right after COVID and he was wanting and needing to get Chromebooks for some of the students that attend your church. And he reached out to me, said, Anne, what can, what can I do? What can I do to help? And just that, he was always engaged, right? He always wanted to know where he could step in and where he could provide extra support for our students. And that is the heart that he had and he is going to be greatly missed by all of those who knew him and loved him. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, I will. Good evening. I'm Jim Holland, Chair of the Chesterfield County Board of Supervisors and member of First Baptist Church for over 32 years as I served with Dr. Shannon. As you know, we are profoundly saddened by his loss, but he believed profoundly and deeply in education and educational excellence. He often said, there's no failure in God with regard to education and we thank him for his leadership. I thank his family for being here to receive this award. I want to thank the school board for rendering this resolution, for voting on and approving it. Thank you, school board members, and we thank the family for being here. May God continue to bless you and keep you. May heaven smile upon you. If you'd like to say anything, you may at this point. You okay? Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Steven Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Cooker.
Aye.
Dodd Heffron.
Aye. The resolution has been adopted. Aye. The resolution has been adopted. Next, we have memo number 123-24, Recognition of Outstanding Drivers with Dr. Fry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. Mr. Roberts, it's my pleasure this afternoon, this evening, to introduce to you our outstanding drivers for the month. There are many bus drivers who could be recognized this month, but each transportation area manager had to make the tough decision to select a single driver who exemplified excellence and dedication to represent their area. We'd like to recognize and honor the following drivers. Nathaniel Kearney, Area 1, Bus 640, 10 months of service. Nate's area office says he's an incredible impact on the students and everyone around him. It's clear that Nate doesn't just do his job. He transforms the experience for everyone he encounters, making a real difference in their lives. Delay Arcey, Area 2, Bus 678, 1 year of service. Delay says she likes getting to know the kids and shares a high level of respect with them. Her area says she always goes above and beyond. Taquia Majahid, Area 3, Bus 836, 12 years of service. Taquia likes being a bus driver because she's not behind a desk and she loves the kids. Tabitha Lee, Area 4, Bus 96, 3 months of service. Tabitha says she looks at her riders as her own children and wants to make sure they are taken care of each day. Alexandra Canada Marcus, Area 5, Bus 758, 6 months of service. Alexandra says she likes her job because she's the first smile in the morning and evening for her students, and she enjoys laughing and singing with the children during their ride. Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. First, I just want to say congratulations. We could not do what we do in our schools without amazing bus drivers to get our kids to school. So thank you for being those faces that our kids see first thing in the morning and the faces that they see when they get off the bus in the afternoon. And thank you for putting up with all of the noise that goes on on those buses. I know it can be quite a lot at some times. So thank you again. Congratulations. And if you want to say your name and why you chose to be a bus driver, what makes it exciting for you each and every day?
Okay, so I'm Alexandra Canada Marcus. I drive for Area 5. What makes it exciting? Technically, I'm a runner, so I get to see different kids. I just get to experience different things with a different child every day.
My name is Tabitha. I'm from Area 4. I drive Bus 96. I love the experience of navigating the roads every day and getting my kids to and from their destination safe and sound.
My name is Taquia Majahid. I'm for Area 3, Bus 836. And I like being out navigating the roads also because it's very different from up north where I'm from.
I'm Delay Arcey, Area 2, Bus 678. And I just enjoy driving the kids from home to school and to school home.
I'm Nate Kearney, Bus 640. I think the thing that makes it exciting for me is to be able to make a difference for kids. Sometimes just seeing somebody positive will make all the difference in the world.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have memo number 124-24, Recognition of Outstanding Food Service Employees with Berkeley Dunbrack.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Mr. Roberts. Thank you as always for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding food nutrition services team members. This evening, we had the opportunity to honor some of our staff members that worked our summer feeding programs this year. Even though the academic year ends in May, our students' hunger persists. While having summers off is a major motivation for many of our staff members, we are incredibly privileged to have dedicated individuals who spend their summers serving hungry students. Between summer school, community feeding programs, and our farmer's market booth, these individuals accounted for over 63,000 meals served to students this summer. Appetites do not take vacations. Unfortunately, neither does our outstanding team. This evening, we have three individuals that were able to join us. Not able to join us this evening, we have Joyce Smith. Ms. Smith is a food service associate at Bellwood Elementary School and also works as a substitute around the county and has been with us for four years. She says, "I love being around the children. They bring such joy to each day. And I also like working with good teams that work well together and focus on our goals to prepare and serve nutritious food to our students each day." Also, we have Nancy Reeves. Ms. Reeves is a food service associate at Curtis Elementary School. She's been with us for nine years, and she says, "I love my job because I get to meet so many different kids and I get to work with great people." Next, we have Laura Hayes. Ms. Hayes is our assistant manager at Manchester High School, and she's been with us for six months. She says, "The best part of my job is the opportunity to create positive interactions with students every day. My goal is to show each of them kindness and compassion and to offer them great service. I love my job because I get the privilege of working alongside an amazing team of dedicated, hardworking people." Next, we have Michelle Wolf. Ms. Wolf is our assistant manager at Bynheer Elementary School, and she's been with us for six years. She says, "I enjoy working in the cafeteria with the children because their energy and enthusiasm makes every day exciting. It is also rewarding because I get to make a positive impact on their day." And lastly, we have a special recognition from my office, Ms. Ronnie Lapel. Ms. Lapel is the marketing specialist for my department, and she is the one that helps me put together this event every month. Ronnie's been with us for eight years, and she says, "The best part about my job is acknowledging the remarkable efforts of our department. With over 400 employees working daily to ensure our children receive proper nutrition, I enjoy changing the perception of school meals through education and program outreach. I also value the strong community partnerships that support our mission. Celebrating our collective successes and seeing the positive impact on students' well-being is incredibly rewarding." So thank you all.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I don't know about y'all, but the weight of my heart is food, so. And I taught a lot of kids, and they were right there. So breakfast, lunch, summer. You all are making sure that they are fed and they are fed well, and I love the upward trajectory of our nutrition. It's pretty excited about it. Thank you all for not only feeding, but also what you said. You know, you're recognizing that when a kid is in front of you, that's a person, and you are speaking just positivity and allowing them to just be a precious little crazy head if they need to be. And you know, that really matters, that just that preciousness that you're sharing with them, that you guys all do. That's why you're here, and we appreciate that. It matters to our kids, and thank you for continuing to feed them. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Yeah, come on. No?
It's funny. Our assistant director, Casey, always says, "You know, you have the best job." And I said, "Yes, I do. I have the best job. I get to work with these professional employees in the schools and within our community and together, you know, with the campaigns and the educational materials. And the outreach we did this summer with the summer feeding to help change the perception is very exciting." So I can't, I'm looking forward to what's going to take place this year. But anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you. Keep it up. Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. For this meeting, citizens were given the option of submitting their comments online or in person. Comments submitted via the online form were sent to the board prior to the start of tonight's meeting and will be included in full as an addendum to the meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please announce this evening's in-person speakers?
For this evening, oh, sorry. Madam Chair, we have eight speakers this evening. They are Tyra Keys, Wendy Little, John Waggoner, Jason Spoon, Gloria Randolph, Tanya Edgerton, Amanda Dowdy, and Robert Everett. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the board. There's a timer set up on top of the podium that will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your time has expired. As a reminder, no personal belongings other than a cell phone and speaker notes are allowed at the podium. Please have your materials organized and mannered that as you arrive at the podium, you are prepared to start speaking. Please note that comments equivalent to campaigning for any public office are a violation of school board policy 1110 and are prohibited. May we have Tyra Keys. Wendy Little. John Waggoner.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. On March 11th of this year, our son Jack, Junior Cosby, died by suicide. Just like any mishap, suicide is underpinned by contributors, like links in a chain. All the links must be present for a suicide to occur. Jack was in the gifted program, attended Enon, Margaret Christian, then Swift Creek Middle School. He wanted to go to Clover Hill High School to be with his friends. He made it to Swift Creek. So he applied and was accepted in the math sci program. His grades caused removal at the end of the sophomore year. The math sci director recommended we apply for a waiver for his homeschool and to remain at Clover Hill. In February 23, we submitted the waiver form, attaching a psychiatric evaluation, his psychiatrist's signature, plus a synopsis stating Jack was diagnosed with suicidal ideation and was encouraged to kill himself. His close friends at Clover Hill were his support and his lifeblood, both during and after the pandemic. In other words, Jack is at risk of suicide, and this waiver will help prevent it. I received the denial in May, stating, "We are not able to consistently apply this criteria, and other students who have been withdrawn from the specialty centers were not permitted waivers to stay as that does not meet the school board criteria." Despite my plea that this request has merit, Jack had no champion at either school. Despite faculty comments acknowledging Jack was down, I'm doubtful Jack's situation was confirmed with the math sci director or his teachers. Erring on the side of caution seems to be the best decision. I learned in Policy 4040R, specialty schools are programs to which a waiver does not apply with no alternative. Policy 4041 might apply, given how Jack was encouraged to kill himself by a student at Cosby. When communicated to both schools, the student was then permitted from attending the same classes at Cosby. Another policy excerpt reads, "Notwithstanding other provisions in this regulation, a principal shall have the authority to consider extraordinary circumstances when deciding whether or not to approve a waiver application. In order to be considered under this provision, the circumstances must be truly extraordinary and not commonplace. And the policy, the homeschool principal's and/or non-homeschool principal's decision, as appropriate, shall be final. Under the inflexible application of this process, we had no recourse to address." Jack and his friends talked about how to return to Clover Hill. Jack returned to his homecoming dance at Clover Hill. His last day, he said he planned on talking to a school counselor at Cosby. Within 45 minutes of this statement, Jack was gone. Post-pandemic, educators recognize student lost learning and the psychological downturn before our waiver request. Policy and its application should reflect this change. Principals were granted the responsibility in making the final decision, so why wouldn't they exercise this responsibility thoughtfully? We can't fix the past, but we can fix it moving forward. The intent of the guidance was not met and seems ambiguous. Principals had the authority and chose not to exercise it. Why specialty schools are an exemption to waivers, I don't know, but given appropriate justification and substantiating documents, this should not be an excuse. Waivers should be appealable and articulated in all policies to encourage written communications from the schools on denials to allow redress.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
Jason Spoon.
And that was compelling. Hey, good, excuse me. Good evening. I'm Jason Spoon. I'm the director of Speak Up Chesterfield with these fine folks behind me, and I'm here tonight again to just encourage you to consider replacing policies, including Policy 1015, with Governor Yonkin's model policies concerning transgender students in the class, in the school system. We're really hoping to see some particular verbiage, you know, concerning, we want to see like, you know, no policy or guidance from a school can encourage or instruct teachers to hide relevant information from parents. Yeah, probably I'll put my eyes on, huh, from parents. We also want to see, you know, parents if notified or given the opportunity to object to counseling giving to their children concerning these decisions. We'd also like to see verbiage protecting constitutional freedom of speech for CCPS staff and students. We'd also like to see us protect students' rights to privacy in bathrooms and locker rooms and other type of areas, sensitive areas. Now, we look forward to supporting these efforts, and we hope to pass, we hope you guys are looking at passing a new policy, but not because, you know, Jason wants them and not because Speak Up Chesterfield wants them, but because it's the right thing to do for parents and the right thing to do for students. And thank you. Man, that was quick, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Spoon. Gloria Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Randolph, and I'm here again, standing for our parents. And I've shared with y'all before that I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, I'm a great-grandmother. And it just blessed me tonight to see the awards that were given to the young people and what they're doing in the schools. It just blessed my heart. I came here to speak to y'all about that, but I was blessed just seeing what took place just before I'm standing here. But my reason here tonight is just to encourage y'all to adopt the policy of Governor Yonkin and include the parents in all the decision-making that is going on concerning their children. And that's why I'm here tonight to continue to ask y'all to please do what needs to be done, that these policies can be put in place, and our children and the parents will be on one accord in any decisions that is made concerning their children, that the parents will have an input and a say-so concerning these decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph. Tanya Edgerton.
You have to excuse me. This is my first time. So I guess, so to get started, I just want to, first of all, say good evening. And thank you, guys, for taking the time away from your families to be here tonight and to listen to us and address our concerns. And also thank you for your work, as I know it cannot be easy that you are making decisions that will affect our future. Because our children is our future. So with that being said, I want to introduce myself. My name is Tanya Edgerton. You said it right. Thank you. And I am a mother of three young kids that attend Chesterfield County Schools. And I am standing up here for my children and for other parents that could... and for other parents that could not make it here tonight. I have serious concerns with the actions of the Chesterfield County Public School Policy 1015 that directly conflicts with Virginia Department of Education model policies, as they've said before, Governor Yonkin's. Tonight, I have truly seen some amazing students do some remarkable accomplishments. And I do hope and pray that one day my children will be standing up here. But I have to tell you, as a medical professional, I know that their minds are not fully developed at this time. So I guess you can say their minds are still under construction during school. So with that being said, I want us as parents to be okay with our, I, so, sorry about that. And you want us parents to be okay with our children's conflicting with other adults with life-changing decisions that will ultimately affect their health, their social, and their psychological developments way beyond their school careers. And I, with my children, I am with them from the moment they wake up. I am with them two hours before school starts, especially elementary, because we all know it starts at, what, 9:24? And I am with them four or five hours every evening, except for tonight, because I'm here speaking on their behalf. And I have been there for all of their milestones, from the day they were born to their sickness to their hospitals. I have been there. And I do want to empower my children to be self thinkers. But to keep secrets with other adults other than their parents? That is a huge issue. I need to be a part of my child's decision, whether at home or at school. I know it takes a village to raise a child. It involves the nurturing and the supporting of our children's development. Highly is important to share this responsibility, and I do give it to you. But it just know that all parts of the village must work together for the success of a society. And our children are the future. I have a seven-year-old daughter. And by this policy that you guys have at this time, she could find herself alone in a bathroom with a boy. That is an invasion of my daughter's privacy. And as a mother, I just cannot wrap my head around the thought of that even occurring or anybody allowing that to occur. So please, as I do entrust you with my child, my children, my God's gift to me and my husband, please make godly decisions and change your position and follow the Virginia Department of Education. Thank you so much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Edgerton. Amanda Dowdy.
I can't follow that. Wow, that was good. Good evening. My name is Amanda Dowdy, and I am a lifelong resident of Chesterfield County in the Bermuda District. And I'm also a graduate of 1998 at Manchester High School. Yes, I am that old. First, I want to thank the school board for taking the time to listen to us tonight. You guys are part of this team, and they've already come ahead of me. And the guy that started out, wow, what an amazing story, and change definitely needs to happen. We know that this policy, of course, is not perfect, but we know that this is a great step to empower us as parents. We thank you for respecting our decision to want to protect every child, including our own. We are parent, we as parents know what is best for our children. I am urging you to remove the policies, including Policy 1015, that cut parents out of the process and take action now to adopt the Yonkin parental policies that was signed back in August of 2023. Let me repeat that, August of 2023. This policy puts parents back in making the final decision for what is best for their children. They are the ones that teaches right from wrong, we do, as parents. I'm urging you that the Yonkin administration revised policies puts parents back in the driver's seat by making it clear no policy or guidance from the school can encourage or instruct teachers to hide relevant information from parents about their kids, especially regarding gender experimentation at school. It makes it clear that parents must be notified and given an opportunity to object before counseling regarding gender is given to their children. This also takes steps protecting the constitutional freedoms of not only employees, but also for our students who don't want to be compelled to speak words that violate their faith or conscience. We are asking you to please stop the delay and take action now to align our district policies with the revised policies released by Governor Yonkin's Education Department, again, August of 2023. Other counties have already implemented this change, one in particular, Virginia Beach, that you can take guidance from. We ask if you take guidance from the regulations that you incorporate confidentiality of information, that participation in school activities and events, use of restrooms, counseling, and accommodations for overnight trips. It is time to clean up harmful policies that disrespect parents' rights to be involved in life-changing decisions in their children's lives and that leave parents in the dark when sexual and general identity experimentation are promoted by school officials to our kids at school. It is us as parents and future parents to have the responsibility for raising our children. Parents have a God-given authority and over their children. We look forward to working with each one of you and give any feedback that we know is at best for our children and their safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Robert Everett.
Right, how y'all doing this evening? I'm Robert Everett, President of Virginia Show and First. I fail to mention this every time. I actually have one child in Chesterfield County system with the Metro District, Mr. Pronto. I also have two grandchildren as well, which means that when my son graduates, I still can come, I can always speak anyhow, but I actually will have a little bit more relevance when it comes to that, because I also have children. And so I'm surprised that parents aren't here tonight. And I don't blame this on you guys, I don't. You know, we've had a lot of Chesterfield County news lately, and it hadn't been good, you know. You can't help if somebody brings to a bus stop. BB Lisa stopped it from getting on the bus in here. But then there was another threat of somebody bombing, I guess it was Manchester. I want to make sure I get the schools right, blah, blah, blah. Where was that? I apologize, Manchester Middle. So they, that was good, they shut down, and that was good. And there was another one that was planned to shoot up the school. Now, there's a lot of things going on with this. We live in crazy times. And with all the attacks that are happening in the nation, and not just with firearms, there's knives, there's all kinds of weapons out there. And they get logged into VDOE and Chester, and Virginia Department of Education. I'll get to that in a minute. And I wouldn't normally, sorry if I touch your mic, I wouldn't normally advocate for any kind of weapons scanning or any kind of metal detectors, because that's like a police state. And I don't want our children to grow up in a police state. But, you know, at what cost? You know, because as of 2021, the VDOE had nineteen weapons incidents on multiple schools in Chesterfield. Now, that happens in every county. I'm not, I'm not pinning this on Chesterfield. But there's also reports on 552 occurrences of violence, assault and battery, bullying, disordery conduct. Here's the thing is, maybe it was only nineteen, but out of those nineteen, how many could have been avoided if we had those systems in place? And I know that's going to take money, I get that. And maybe that's a board of supervisors thing, and maybe you guys try to figure out the budget on that, because I know other counties have done it. Montgomery County's done it, Amelia County's done it. I talked to Amelia, even though they're smaller, I get it, they got less schools. They actually didn't, it didn't slow the flow of the classes. It didn't slow the flow of the students coming into the classes. So we need to look at that, because rather than worry about the guns and weapons that are coming in, we need to worry about stopping them from coming in. And I think that's something we need to look at as well. So I could go with a list of schools, but I'm not. Let's see where it was at. And I showed you left, and another thing too is, you know, they shouldn't be getting into schools or on the buses. I'm not sure what you're going to do about on the buses, but they should certainly not be able to get into schools. So we got to have a system on that. The next thing I want to do is, obviously, there was a teacher that got busted with methamphetamines at school, and, I mean, I don't know if it was laced with fentanyl or not. What if a child touched it or something? Then we'd be looking at something totally different. So I looked at the policies, I see what you guys do, but I haven't seen random drug testing, I haven't seen, and again, it's a police state, I hate even saying this, drug dogs coming in, sniff, you know, everything else. Because that, when I grew up in school, they would take the drug dogs around the lockers. I don't know if we still do that, I didn't see anything with that. But we need to look at this too, because we don't want teachers bringing in drugs and children being around it, plus them using while they're teaching. And that's a very slim view, I'm sure, I'm not saying all teachers do that. But we need to look into something, how we can stop that. I know we're short on teachers, I get that. But this is no excuse, you know, I know you guys don't condone this, but it's no excuse to keep them because of this. So I hope that this person is disciplined and held to the fullest in the law, having drugs around children in a public school that shouldn't have been there in the first place. And I hope this is an isolated event. I hope it doesn't happen again, I hope it didn't happen before, it just never got reported. So we need to look at what we're doing with, you know, screening people randomly to drug test. So I really don't have much to say other than that. Virginia Show and First, Robert Everett. I appreciate your time, you guys have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's report, Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have three presentations. First is a presentation from Sean Smith on the first week of the 24-25 school year.
Well, we started a bell at elementary in July with the first week of school three weeks ago. We had an exciting week. We took this video and tried to cram in there in sixty-five seconds, everything we could for the whole first week, so I hope you enjoy.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion?
That's just super cute.
Always super cute.
And it was a great week.
I like that dress, Ms. Chatters.
I was going to say, the folks on the bus loop there looks pretty, pretty sweet. Yeah, I should have worn the sunglasses tonight. Board members, the following slides will provide you a peek a bit further into the window of our school opening this year. So a few more pictures. Since the first day, I've had the pleasure of visiting sixty-one of our schools and programs where classrooms are engaging and staff are energized. Principals have shared in large that this has been one of the smoothest openings, logistically, that they have experienced, which speaks to the contributions and the readiness of Team Chesterfield, some highlights of which were shared in previous presentations in the work session earlier this evening. It was a joy to experience the first days of school with each of you at several of our sites, whether having conversations with students in the classrooms, at a lunch table, participating in music classes, or at recess, or thanking staff and waving to buses as they arrived or departed. Indeed, all of these little moments and acts of thoughtful planning have provided an atmosphere of excitement for staff and students who are happy to be back together as we explore the journey that is our 24-25 school year. However, things will not always be sunshine and roses. Issues will undoubtedly arise in a division that supports roughly 65,000 students. So I want to take this opportunity to remind our families of the problem-solving flow chart pertaining to the most common points of concern so that our staff may respond most deliberately and quickly in a collaborative effort to provide appropriate resolution. This also makes great refrigerator decoration. Although we are less than a month into our new school year, strategic work has ramped up as principals have completed their respective school innovation and improvement plans for the year. Among a host of resources and initiatives supporting the academic improvement process, virtual and in-person tutoring opportunities are set to kick off next month, a proposal of which includes access to Stride across all levels. Additionally, and under Dr. Pope's leadership, we have launched a new leadership cohort to grow capacity among our emerging special education leaders. This complements similar leadership cohorts already in place focusing on administrative growth. One last highlight in which you all got to participate was the awarding of CEF Innovation Grants to a number of our staff members, which will allow engaging initiatives to take flight in our schools and classrooms. I want to thank Laura Height, Executive Director of the Foundation, for her partnership and commitment to enhancing our student experience. At the start of a new year, most often, we see the work that still needs to be done. And do not pause long enough to consider all of the projects that have been completed along the way. I want to thank all the folks working behind the scenes that have contributed to summer projects, major maintenance, as well as facility improvements and cleanliness, the technicians, the custodial crews, the building operations supervisors, the skilled workers, et cetera. And to that end, one example in particular to highlight is that we are now down to our final four vestibule installations. This was a major lift, but a necessary one to continue our efforts in optimizing campus safety, which we were unfortunately reminded of its significance last week in Georgia and even in our own school district. We look forward to these projects wrapping up over the next several weeks. As well, and while there are some routes still being refined to address some one-off issues, our bus drivers and transportation team are doing a great job of getting our students to school and home safely. We are also excited for the upcoming Bensley and Western Area Elementary School groundbreaking later this fall. Both sites will provide relief to surrounding schools due to growth, but more importantly, will provide students and staff with a learning environment that makes them proud. Finally, and in the spirit of new school builds, our staff are currently considering redistricting and rezoning proposals for AM Davis and the Western Area Middle School, which will be presented to the board at our November meeting, after which community meetings will be hosted. Lastly, Chesterfield remains a coveted community in which to live, work, and learn. Recently, our county was recognized with thirty-two national awards across several entities, with CCPS receiving eight awards of distinction, the list of which is on the screen. One additional plug of celebration is that we, in partnership with the County Government Office of Sports Visitation and Tourism, have kicked off an exciting new initiative where we will do a weekly radio segment featuring each high school. And each high school will get a week in the fall, winter, and spring to celebrate the extracurricular excitement going on in their buildings. Great work is occurring in each magisterial district and all around us. I know I referenced a few departments specifically, but I would be remiss to not more fully acknowledge the wonderful work occurring under the direction of each cabinet member chief. However, and most deserving of our praise for a wonderful start to this school year are the folks in the trenches making the magic happen each and every day, and that is our building-level staff. So thank you for allowing me to share some of those wonderful kickoff spotlights. Happy to answer any questions you might have on a feel-good presentation.
Thanks, Dr. Murray, that was a feel-good. Board members, any discussion?
I just had one. You had mentioned the Stride funding that we're trying to initiate. Can you go into a little bit more detail about where that money is coming from so the community understands where we're going with Stride? the community understands where we're going with stride?
Yeah, so the board, some board members had put out that there was an interest in us considering stride tutoring, expanding that. Right now, our all-in dollars are, for tutoring, you have to qualify for all-in tutoring sessions. Stride provides opportunities remotely where kids can log in, receive sessions as they feel or their family feels they need it. This was not something we initially funded for because we have a set amount of dollars that have to last us three years. We've done some creative thinking and one proposal, the one that was shared with each of you for feedback, is that annually, we withhold 20% of our schools' or individual schools' operating budget. Some years, they get it in full, some years they don't. The proposal would be to hold back 10% of that so that our students can have their academic needs most strategically met.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Murray.
All right, thank you.
And so our last presentation is a literacy presentation?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna tee up Dr. Booth.
With Dr. Booth.
With our literacy update.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Murray. I am Dr. Boonik Booth, Director of Elementary Curriculum Development and Support. It is my pleasure to update you today on our division's progress in implementing the Virginia Literacy Act and our CCPS Literacy Plan. We last provided a literacy update to the School Board in March 2024. In CCPS, oh, sorry, gotta advance. In CCPS, we believe through high-quality literacy instruction, students become creative thinkers, effective communicators, strong readers and writers, and adept problem solvers who can contribute to the world around them. With this belief, I'm excited to update you on our division's literacy work. As a reminder, our most recent CCPS Literacy Plan was adopted by the Board in May 2022. We are currently operating in the second version of that Division Literacy Plan. This year, our work is to continue revisions to our literacy plan to incorporate further the VDOE Literacy Plan Expectations as determined by the VLA. We are excited to share that this will require minimal changes, as the majority of our plan was already incorporating the VLA components. We look forward to building our third iteration of our Division Literacy Plan for your review to extend from 2025 through 2028. This slide should look very familiar, as I shared it during my last board update in March. It highlights our current division progress in the implementation of the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. The VLA went into effect across the Commonwealth for students in kindergarten through grade eight this fall. The majority of actionable guidance from the Commonwealth has been for grades K through five. We continue to await more guidance on grades six through eighth throughout this school year in preparation for implementation during the 25-26 school year and beyond. The purpose of today's presentation is to spotlight our current division progress and upcoming actions. As a reminder, school divisions are expected to implement high-quality instructional materials as approved by the VDOE for core curriculum, supplemental, and intervention reading and literacy programs for students in kindergarten through grade five. Additionally, as a part of the VLA, K-8 educators are required to receive training in evidence-based literacy instruction aligned to science-based reading research. Beginning with the 24-25 school year, the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, VOWs, formerly known as POWs, will be used as the state-provided screening tool for Virginia's early intervention reading initiative and to identify students who require a student reading plan in kindergarten through grade three. Based on the list of approved K-5 ELA core curriculum, CCPS selected open court reading to serve as our division's core literacy curriculum. We are excited to enter year two of implementation. Supplemental and intervention programs serve different purposes and needs. Supplemental programs provide additional evidence-based literacy instruction and/or practice on a specific literacy skill that is aligned to science-based reading research. Supplemental programs are used to enhance a core instructional program during whole-class or small-group instruction. Intervention programs provide systematic, explicit, evidence-based literacy instruction aligned to science-based reading research to students who persistently struggle to master literacy skills. The VLA requires school divisions to identify which supplemental and intervention programs they will use in their Division Literacy Plan and for intervention services and student reading plans. We are in the process of reviewing the VBOE Approved Supplemental and Intervention Programs List for potential use in CCPS. As a part of the selection process, we surveyed principals to gain their input regarding the programs from the list they already have in their schools, and provided for them an opportunity to share general comments about the approved programs. We will be prepared to submit our updated VBOE Required Literacy Plan by December 6. In 2023, the VLA was expanded from the original requirements of training for elementary school teachers, elementary school principals, reading specialists, and special education teachers, to include training for ESL teachers, middle school teachers, and middle school principals. By the end of the 24-25 school year, these audiences must complete their training that is most aligned to their role. There are four pathways as outlined on the screen. This training is being completed outside of school hours. For this school year, teachers and reading specialists will receive a CCPS-funded stipend upon completion of this requirement. In 2024-25 school year, the revised K-3 literacy screener includes the updates you see bulleted on the slide. VOWs is required for all K through three students in the fall, and depending on a student's level of risk, future assessments may be required in the winter and spring assessment windows, which are noted on our division's assessment calendar. Teachers administering the VOWs are required to complete and pass a training module. Based on the fall VOWs administration, students scoring in the high-risk band qualify for additional intervention or support and are required to have a student reading plan. Such reading intervention services shall consist of evidence-based literacy instruction aligned with science-based reading research and be documented for each student in a written student plan. Parents will be notified and have the opportunity to collaborate on the development of their child's plan. Throughout this school year, I will work closely with Emily Staines, the Director of Secondary Curriculum Development and Support, as we navigate and await additional guidance from VDOE on the VLA requirements as listed on the screen. Thank you for your time this afternoon, commitment, and literacy support. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Booth. Board members, any discussion? Mr. Pronto?
As POWs becomes VOWs, and the dartboard gets moved around, and we're trying to make sure that we hit it to meet the standards that are set forth before us. Dr. Booth, I just want to thank you and your team for being flexible and adaptive and creative and outside-the-box thinkers in how do we respond appropriately to the VDOE and instructions that are given from that level down to us, sometimes, well, not sometimes, majority of the time, without additional funding. And then we have to figure out how to make it work. And we've got great people like you and our team to help us with that. So no question, just a thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk.
Dr. Booth, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
I also want to say thank you, but I do have a couple of questions. On Slide 8, where you talk about professional development, when we implemented in year one, we had, did we have a team come out and actually do some training with our teachers and staff? That was open court?
That was through open court, yes. That training was provided throughout the school year, coaching support.
Right. So this is different than that first-year training? This is through, is it through the, through UVA?
Yes, it's offered through UVA. It's a part of the required evidence-based literacy training that all teachers across Virginia have to complete.
Gotcha. All right. Are they, so we just have it in Canvas courses? Is anybody coming to do in-person training or anything?
No, they're the pathways that were noted on that slide. So they have Canvas modules that they do on their own time. And then there's the other option where they could have had the other training options that they could get credit for, which minimizes the amount of modules that they have to complete. So it can range from three modules to non-modules depending on which pathway they take.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And there's a stipend attached to that, right?
Yes.
So that's, please note. Yes, thank you for that. Thank you, Dr. Booth. Next, we have action items. I'll invite Mr. Carson to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. You have before you a memorandum regarding a change order for the Chesterfield Virtual School Megatrailer Project for some additional stonework that was required in order to make these megatrailers a reality. So we spoke at the afternoon session about the various major maintenance work that we undertook this summer, the megatrailers being one of them. This work, as you know, is this not, sorry, Anne, you were, okay. That's okay. It's very fast-paced work, and we have a lot to do, obviously, during the summertime. Time is short. However, we ran into some low-slope areas. We had to build up the building pads for our megatrailers such that they were out of the drink, so to speak. And that required us to act quickly and decisively while on site and authorize a $67,000 change order to bring in additional fillstone to elevate the building pads for these megatrailers to allow for positive drainage away from the site in accordance with our stormwater plan. So $67,000 is the value of the work to unlimited landscaping services. And as you know, the board policy requires that we seek permission from the School Board for any change order in excess of $50,000 or 25% of the contract value, whichever is greater. In this case, $67,000 is the greater of the two. There is no impact on our project budget for this change order. So staff recommends that, upon consideration, the Board approve this request. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Okay, right. We got this. We're good. Thank you, Mr. Carson. Board members, may I have a motion to approve memo number 126-24 as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Coker.
Aye.
Dot Heffron.
Aye. The memo is approved. Next, I think we have memo 125-24?
That's correct. I had these out of order. My copy has XXX on it.
I was just thinking, you know, we were gonna add a golf course to the CTC.
No, they got it. It was just out of order on their script. It was in order, but you had it out.
Let's proceed to memo 125-124.
You know what? We pivot. In education, we pivot.
You have to be flexible.
So 125-24.
Thank you. Apologies noted. Again, we spoke earlier this afternoon about our various CIP projects, and we are very fortunate to report that on August 27, we received eight bids for our Western Area Elementary School. Eight bids in this market is fantastic. Those bids ranged in price from just over $43 million to just over $52 million. So it was fairly widespread. And as you know, we take the lowest and most responsive bidder, you know, review their paperwork, obviously, and work with the procurement department and our architect to formulate an award recommendation. And this evening, I am coming before you to request that you consider Cambridge Construction for the value of $43,153,000 for the construction of the Western Area Elementary School, both building and site. This project is fully vetted within our CIP program and has no impact on our overall CIP program funding, as the funding is included in the form of general obligation bonds and other CCPS and county sources. If approved, we will get right to work formulating the contract and scheduling a groundbreaking perhaps for later this fall.
Fantastic. September's filling up. Thank you, Mr. Carson. Board members, may I have a motion to approve memo number 125-24 as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Get stock and shovel? Gold shovel companies, I guess.
We kept the gold shovels from the last one, so we're good to go.
There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Coker.
Aye.
Dot Heffron.
Aye. The memo is approved. Thank you, Mr. Carson. Next, we have the discussion agenda. Mr. Smith?
Madam Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Murray, you have before you memorandum number 127-24. Staff recommends revisions to current policies and regulations as follows. Revisions to policy Appendix A, Section 21, revised. Information retained to the Fair Labor Standards Act, where an overtime cap is proposed. Proposed changes have been reviewed by the School Board Attorney. Second reading and final School Board adoption for the above name is scheduled for the next regular School Board meeting. If approved, revisions to current policies and regulations will become effective immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, is there any discussion regarding that memo or the revised, the policy revision? I have a question I had. Could you go a little bit more into the background of the why behind that change?
Yes, ma'am. And going through some of our work and talking closely with the County Government, we felt like it was important that we have an alignment with the County Government as far as overtime cap. So essentially, what this does is it allows for employees shall not work more than 850 hours overtime in a calendar year. So I think it would have little impact on our employees directly, but we thought it's important to have that structure that's aligned with the County Government.
And I would think it would help with budget planning and all of that as well. I mean, obviously, we'd be able to better align our budget with our anticipated overtime.
Yes, ma'am. It would.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we have items for board review. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items for this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's agenda includes the following items for the board review. Number one, Magisterial District Improvement Funds FY 2025. Number two, FY 2024, June Preliminary Expenditures vs. Appropriations, unaudited. Number three, FY 2025, July Expenditures vs. Appropriations. Number four, Budget Change Request Summary Across Categories, July 2024. Number five, Board Committee Reports. And number six, Pre-K Update, June and July 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's remarks. Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a handful of acknowledgements and updates. Want to share that the VDOE intends to share its model cellphone policy, or guidelines, I should say, with school divisions in the next two weeks. So there'll be some pretty thought-provoking conversations going around our neck of the woods, if not already. I want to thank Dr. Gold when you approved Ms. Manos this evening. That should have revealed to the rest of the community tuning in that Dr. Gold is moving on to retirement. She's got some grandbabies on the way and looks forward to enjoying that season of life. I want to very publicly say thank you to her. She came in and did some significant lift in a very short period of time. We look forward to where Ms. Manos will take us, but we know that Dr. Gold leaves us in a great place. In the same spirit, I want to acknowledge Glenn Pike, who will be retiring at the end of the month, who is our Assistant Director. I think he's out of the school, if he's not in the back of the room. Assistant Director of Safety and Security, he's done a remarkable job over the years, really launched that department, and we'll miss him. He's given a lot of decades to the field of education and law enforcement, and so we look forward to him now enjoying some time to himself. we look forward to him now enjoying some time to himself. A transportation word, I want to thank our parents who are putting their kids on the bus, as it makes traffic patterns more predictable and safer in our communities. As well, I appreciate our family's display of grace to our transportation staff over the first few weeks as we work through adjustments, learning curves, and while those are being addressed, so just a note of appreciation to our families. This Thursday, the County Sports Visitation and Tourism Office will give their inaugural event for a sports Hall of Fame here in Chesterfield. I mention this because our very own Ken Oxendine, who was a star player at Thomas Dale back in the day, went on to play at the NFL level, will be in the inaugural class, so we look forward to celebrating Ken. Back-to-school nights are in full swing or kicking off, so we encourage our parents to get out, meet teachers, meet administrative staff, join the PTA, PTOs, and support all things at their kids' schools. And then lastly, I want to acknowledge that we've seen some copycat moments since the Georgia tragedy that occurred last week. We did close a school for a day, we did cancel after-school activities at another, but that is not our true narrative here in Chesterfield. The majority of our students come to school every day and go home from us every evening and do great things, and they are compelled to do that. Before sharing a different story with you, in the spirit of threats, I just feel it appropriate to clarify for our community that most of the time, we know where the threat is coming from, and we get hands-on the student or students. We partner very closely with our police department, and they are great partners in the work. And we rely on them, especially in after-hours scenarios, to tell us if something might be credible or not, or if it hasn't been substantiated, and they do a tremendous job doing that as quickly as they can. If push comes to shove and we are unable to comfortably tell our community that there is not a credible threat risking their child's safety, and I have two kids in the school system, so that's how I try to think through all of this. We are not compelled to put our kids in harm's way by only offering enhanced police presence at our sites. We do have a robust threat assessment process, we do follow our disciplinary practices, we do report threats to the police department, as I mentioned. I say all of that to any student or parent tuning in that would share this with their students, that this is not a good practice to threaten schools or others because it will catch up with you, and we can't be in the business of closing our schools. Our 65,000 kids need us each day, and it's our responsibility to make that the safe place. Mr. Eberth, I appreciate your comments, and so I want to share with the community that we are in the beginning phases of evaluating what the feasibility of weapons detection or additional security enhancements might be, fiscally, from a staff perspective, staffing of those machines, et cetera. But finally, I want to share a story out of Meadowbrook High School that was, made its way around social media, but these aren't the things, unfortunately, you get to hear about in the news. A community member observed three of our high school students, Meadowbrook Monarchs, walking through one of the business parking lots, and they found a wallet on the ground. And she stayed and watched what they might do from afar, and they placed that wallet on the car at which the wallet was found, and they kept walking on their way to school. Then she observed a woman with a young child running out frantic, as she described it, finds the wallet, is relieved, goes through it, all the contents are there. She tells this other observer who she had seen. Those aren't the stories that get told, and so when we cancel after-school activities for a bomb threat at Meadowbrook, just remember all the other kids at Meadowbrook that find wallets and give them back. That's how our kids in Chesterfield represent us. It's not one threat. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Next, we have announcements, communication, and school board comments. Are there any announcements or comments from school board members? Ms. Chatters?
So, I have a list. Forgive my voice, but I have a list, and I just checked that off because Dr. Murray beat me to it. I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Fry's transportation team. We did have some hiccups in our district, and the immediate response, the visual diagrams, because I, it works better when you see a picture, and the responsiveness from that team was very helpful in mitigating some miscommunications in my district. I also want to say thank you to Josh Davis, working with the board supervisors to get that area near Meadowbrook High School paved. Doesn't seem like a big issue to some of you, but if you have to traverse that area to get to practices and things of that nature, it's great that we partnered with the board supervisors to get that done. Alternative programs, their episode just dropped on Spotify, so if you have a moment, please take a listen. Not saying you should listen just because I'm on that episode, but I'm just saying. Cafe con la comunidad, I participated in that with the board supervisors at Bueller Rec Center. Lot of questions about schools. The whole intent of that was done in Spanish so that the community could get their questions answered in their own language, and then people who did not speak Spanish had headsets. So, it was reverse of what we normally do, and it was so amazing, the room was packed, it was great. So, si tiene tiempo, tu puede ir otra vez para la cafe con comunidad. So, if there's another one, you should join us. I want to say thank you to Mr. Smith and the comms team and CCPD echoing what Dr. Murray said about our threats. Someone told me when I first got this, when I first won, is don't read the comments, right? But I can't do that. So, I read the comments, and I'm grateful that you explained it, because I had it on here to explain as well, that as a board, we don't take it lightly, anything that's coming through about threats to our schools. We are, I won't say OCD on it, but like, we're up, you know, when Sean is sending that email at 11:43, at 12:05, at 1:43 in the morning. We are reading those because we care about making sure we're making the right decision for our kids, and so when the implication, and it happens, right, because social media does that, just ask the question first, right? Give us the opportunity to explain what we're doing and have a little bit of grace in that as well, because CCPD is doing an awesome job trying to do a threat assessment, and to echo Dr. Murray, if we don't have the information, then we make a decision ourselves, right? And that's what we're trying to do. But what we're not going to do is be held hostage to children making threats, knowing that there's nothing there, right? And those threats have consequences, so we really do need to enforce and educate our kids that, back in my day, you might be able to do that, and it's a slap on the wrist, but today, no, that's not what's happening, and we don't need our children doing something foolish that follows them for the rest of their lives, right? So, let's continue to make sure they understand that their actions have consequences, and just thank you, Sean, because, I mean, the emails are like, when I tell you we're up, y'all, it's, we're up, you know, trying to make sure that we're making the right decision. And as a mom of four in four different schools of Chesterfield County, I appreciated the diligence and effort and the responsiveness to my questions, because I did ask questions, so that we can make the right decisions for our kids. So, thank you.
Any other comments or announcements? Mr. Pronto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Dr. Murray bringing up the VDOE cellphone policy. I have fielded numerous emails from constituents in regards to that, and one of the things, to Ms. Chatters' point, right, I was told the same thing, don't read the comments. At the end of the day, though, we read them. It just, you just do. But anyway, one of the comments that was made, well, several comments that were made was, why is Chesterfield not leading the example? I think the example is to allow VDOE to do their job and then release to the Commonwealth the expectation, and then we follow that and work with, you know, our staff here at CCPS under direction of our interim superintendent. We listen to our principals, we talk with our parents, we listen to teachers, and we say, well, hey, here's the guidelines that we have to follow, and we have to play within these bounds, and so we do that. And so, no, CCPS, this board has not put a cellphone policy in place with the VDOE, and what I'm referencing is the current conversation. We do have a cellphone policy in place, but not specifically to what some parents are looking for, and so I just ask that you understand that we are waiting for that direction. And then speaking of waiting for that direction, I do appreciate the comment that was made earlier in regards to the governor's model policy, having been put out since August of last year, I think is what it was, or July of last year. I don't have an answer for why the previous board didn't instill that. I am a big supporter of making sure that parents have the right, that they do get a say in what's going on in their children's education, and that they are notified when something's not right, and so I look forward to working with this board to ensure that that's exactly the message that our parents receive. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Board members, any other comments? I would like to take a moment to extend my condolences to the family and loved ones who are mourning the loss of Orion Solomon, Monican High School class of 2024 graduate who was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident on August 27th. Catherine and Joe, I and the entire Monican Marching Cheese family continue to hold you and the girls in our hearts and prayers. Just name it. The school board will hold a work session on Wednesday, sorry, on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. here in the public meeting room. It will be followed by a business meeting at 6:30. If there is no further business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye.
Dot Heffron.
Aye, the motion carries. The September 10, 2024, school board business meeting is adjourned.